And we're ready when you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for remotely attending tonight's city council meeting. The camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person. Just so that you know, we may lose that. They only allow six sites, so we may lose that picture. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. And you will notice the picture of a hand in the right, in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click on the button and you will be given your opportunity to address council. So let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, for liberty and justice for all. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Jelloba.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy. Counselor Powers. Counselor Powers, I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Scamperley.
Here.
Quorum present.
We do not have any presentations tonight. Do not have any public hearings tonight. And before we go to personal appearance, I'd like to make a comment. Tonight, some counselors will. They do nothing but hurt city. And I think. We're all very dear into things.
Can you mute your device? We're getting a lot of feedback on your end. Okay, Mayor, you need to start over again. We couldn't hear you. There was a lot of feedback there.
Before we go to personal appearance, I'd like to make a comment. I believe that tonight, some counselors will again, you know, bring ill will to the other counselors. And I just want to say. This infighting, we're only hurting the city. We, it's over a year. We have not worked together on, on any issue. And, and the city needs us to start working together. So, you know, you know, do what you want, but, but we are really only hurting our, our city that. You know, that we're elected here to make changes. And so with that said, personal appearances, at this time, anyone attending remotely would like to address council. Please use the raise hand feature and the city clerk will recognize you and unmute you one person at a time. You have five minutes.
The first individual is registered as Michael Thule and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. Mr. Thule, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me, Kathy?
Yes, we can, sir.
All right, thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to address council tonight. My first comments are to inform counsel my reactions to quotes attributed recently to the city manager and articles that appeared in North Country now. First, in the February 6 story reporting the termination of an Augsburg firefighter. The city manager refers to the $800,000 owed by the city to St. Lawrence County in the parent request by the county to pay this debt in full in 2021. He states in part, "The city of Augsburg's approved 2021 budget cannot absorb an unplanned expense of this magnitude." "I believe if paid, the city budget will not incur $800,000 expenses this year as I suspect the $800,000 due to the county is included in the city's balance sheet as a liability." "The balance sheet of December 31, 2019 audit shows a liability due to other governments with a balance of $2.6 million." And I believe this probably includes the $800,000 due to St. Lawrence County plus unpaid school taxes owed to city school district. So a payment of $800,000 affects the balance sheet. It doesn't affect budgeted expenses. The city may have to borrow for cash flow purposes, so would incur some interest expense, maybe in the area of 20,000 to 30,000, depending on when the notes obtained, plus professional expenses, but much, much, much less than $800,000. So if I'm correct, I hope going forward, the city manager won't refer to this possible transaction as a significant drain on the city's 2021 budget. Secondly, in articles pertaining to the arbitrator's findings in the matter between the city and the police union, I'm disappointed the city manager continues to speak lightly at times about the city charter. At times in city council meetings last year, he made comments that implied it's no big deal to make changes to the charter and to take actions that the charter might not permit. His recent comments that this is not the first time or the last time the charter be violated, this decision about the arbitrators, a lesson learned for new council members, to me are not responsible comments from a city manager. To me, the city manager's attitude exhibited publicly as it pertains to the charter is an insult to those who first framed it and to those of us who have served on city charter commissions over the years. Next, regarding the arbitrator's decision. It's my understanding that the city's contract with the police union includes language, if necessary, for binding arbitration to settle a dispute. If so, my layman's opinion is that in ratifying the contract, both sides agree to accept the findings of the arbitrator. Searching for definitions of binding arbitration online, I found one that states, "The process ends with a judgment made by a third party to settle a dispute between two other parties and the decision is legally binding and enforceable by a court." Another states in binding arbitration, "Both parties are bound to the judgment of the arbitrator." From my view, the city has already agreed to accept the findings of the arbitrator when it ratified the contract. So holding that belief, I question whether it's even appropriate for council to be having a meeting tonight because I don't know that you have the standing to do so. Finally, I thank the city for making available at its website the Financial Restructuring Board Report. It seems to me that since its publication in June 2019, city council has and is continuing to try to implement many of the recommendations in this report. For some issues such as building fund balance, actions began back in 2017. But I think the primary difference in actions to city council prior to 2020 and the actions to city council beginning 2020 is the pace at which these goals might be achieved. The newer members of the current council wanted an accelerated pace with what I believe was a primary focus of property tax reduction. While the 10% property tax levy was adopted in 2021, I think the price paid was steep. Strained relations with city employee unions and exodus of capable staff from city hall. A city with many residents frustrated that major decisions were made ahead of meetings, many times without explanation or discussion at the public meeting. Failure to answer reasonable questions posed at these meetings, maybe not that same night, but a following night. And now we face the possibility four of you might forfeit your seats, which I think might result in state interaction to help Augsburg form a governing body since the city charter requires four votes of city council to fill a vacancy. I just think it's sad we're at this point in city government. Thank you.
Mike, are you still there?
Yes.
What are your thoughts on the fact that, that now, now we are in the burden of having all the past years of not paying the county? I mean, do you think at some point, what we're, what we're working on now is putting property tax foreclosure authority over on the county from the city?
And we really, we really should move on in the presentation section, Mike, not so we don't.
All right. Well, in the future, Mike, maybe you could, if you'd like to call me and, you know, we could talk thoughts on that. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
The next individual is registered as Scott McRoberts and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. It appears your line is open.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I wanted to speak tonight to enlighten the mayor and council on a problem with the resolution that was passed on 6/22/20 that developed the working roles between the city council and city attorney. During that meeting, it was determined that at least four counselors would be required to authorize a fellow counselor to obtain a legal opinion from the city attorney. However, this contradicts an existing part of the municipal code under administrative regs, AR 17 F 6.13 that states any member of city council may request written legal opinions related to city business from the city manager. Upon receiving the request, the city manager will request the same from the city attorney. And upon receipt thereof, the written legal opinion will be distributed to all members of council. Now, in order to amend the municipal code, an ordinance would have to be passed that would also require a public hearing. Neither of these happened. In short, it is evident that the majority of council does not take the city charter, municipal code, or any other documents that dictate how city government is to be run seriously, as evidenced by this in the recent ruling by an arbitrator. Perhaps they need to spend a little time reviewing and following these documents instead of being plastered all over Facebook, because in the end, it might cost you the limelight and the power you love so much. Now, are you guys doing Q and A again, Mike, or is that, is that just for certain individuals?
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual is registered as David Price and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are, your line is open, sir.
Good evening, council. I have several different comments to make, so I'm not going to say them probably as eloquently as Mr. Thule did. But I just want to give you some information. When an arbitrator offers an opinion, just so you know, the legal term opinion doesn't mean an opinion like, "I like the color orange." An opinion is a decision. And an arbitrator's decision is binding, as Mr. Thule said, and enforceable in court. This decision obviously wasn't entered into lightly by this arbitrator. Apparently, he took all kinds of information from both sides, took it into consideration and rendered his opinion. I see that some of our counselors are hiding behind an attorney's advice on their social media accounts, saying that was the advice of the attorney. I'd like to remind you, that's the same attorney who lost the arbitration, using the same arguments. Also, I don't know if you know this, but attorneys enter into a courtroom. Two attorneys enter, both thinking that they have a winnable case and that their opinion is the right one. Only one leaves with a win. In this case, it was not the city's attorney that left with the win. There are some other parts that were, that were discussed, you know, recently by the, by the city manager and some counselors in the, in the media. That the council as a whole passes a resolution and it's not just individuals. On the arbitrator's decision, he specifically points out that the majority of city council. He didn't say the council as a whole, the majority, which means I call to the four people who voted in favor of these decisions. It shouldn't be taken lightly that not only did citizens call into the May 6, before the May 6 meeting to let you know that it was a violation of the charter, but the three minority counselor members asked for legal opinion during that meeting and were denied it, even though Mr. McRoberts just explained that they should have had access all along. So with the majority being held responsible and the charter being the law of the city of Augsburg, you know, clearly it calls for, for a pre-letting of the charter, the call for forfeiture of office, which I, which I'm sure you are all aware of. You know, what you do tonight is going to be watched by all. My last meeting, I made reference to Groundhog Day, the movie. I'm not going to do that today. Today, I'm going to reference Judgment Day. Because the city of Augsburg's residents will be judging what you do today. I wrote you a letter on May 26 of last year outlining why we call members of the council honorable, why the mayor is called the honor, because those positions require a modicum of integrity. Everyone took an oath of office. Everyone swore to uphold the charter. So I guess it would, it would be a measurement and a measure of your level of integrity to see how we act tonight. As, as Mr. Thule so eloquently stated, technically, I don't even know how you should have a meeting. It doesn't say removal from office. It says forfeiture. That means give up. So I think the citizens are asking you to recognize the fact that you violated the charter knowingly and willingly. I mean, those terms are in your arbitrator's decision. The term unambiguous is in the arbitrator's decision. There's literally no question here. But as you move forward, by not stepping down, you know, that's a further violation of the charter. We, the citizens of Augsburg, are prepared to go to the next step. If you have to do so, I would rather have you guys show the integrity I know that you have somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, for your opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Always interesting. Kathy, who's next?
Thank you, Dave.
The next individual is registered as Kelly LaRocque and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say if you're going to start the Pledge of Allegiance, that you should probably do it appropriately. And if you can't, then ask a kindergartner and they can help you out with that. Second of all, Counselor Fisher, you should probably stop interrupting. It's very rude.
Thank you.
Are you done? I think she's done, Kathy.
I could continue, but I'm going to be more appropriate than that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
Give me one moment, Mayor. I just need to make the adjustment on the audio. Okay. The next individual is registered as Brandon Mitchell and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. It appears your line is open.
Hello, you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Open them ears, because this is what we need, you guys need to hear. You've heard it from me before. But let's take a moment of silence for those recently lost to suicide. Scott Reed. Trevor Woods. Damison Montroy. And Narissa Branda Carter. As of 2016, St. Lawrence County rate per 100,000 was at 8.3. New York State's rate is an 8.4. This was a Syracuse study in 2016. Guess, imagine what the numbers are today because of this pandemic. We have had two in a week, five in the past eight months. We are in trouble if we don't do something now. I'm calling on all state and local officials to call a suicide awareness emergency and request emergency mental health funds to the city to help our citizens. This is a pandemic like the one we are in now. This is an issue we must face head on. I will be glad to assist. I cannot and will not stop my awareness. To save lives, we must, we must not stop. We must care. We must help the ones who need help. The right way. Let's, let's also look after our first responders. They're the ones out there making those tough calls and answering those who need help. Where is their help? It's okay to ask for help. It is okay not to be okay. Have hope for their families in healing. Pain comes and go. Let's get through difficult times together. Let's help each other. Getting help is okay. The suicide hotline number is 1-800-273-8255. Now, I've, I started this last year and I started the year off January 1 outside of city hall. My daughters were with me. They decided that they wanted to help me with awareness. They're my greatest support. If they can do this, you guys can do this. And the only way to stop this is by awareness. Awareness leads to prevention. Now, we need to get with mental health, which I have gotten in contact with and I have not heard anything back from the director of mental health. If we get with her and figure out what we need to do to get these people help. But the only way to get these people help is by us leading them, by checking on your neighbors, by saying hi, by, you know, just doing good things for people. I know that this city has been, you know, in rough shape for years. But guess what? We're in remote learning now too. So the kids are hurting. And these, these kids that, you know, just lost their mother, you know, that, that's sad. We need to do something and we need to do it now. So by doing this, we can prevent suicide. That's it. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual is registered as Cynthia Lang and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. It appears your line is open now.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, council. I would like to take this opportunity to make an official public statement to the majority council. I represent a large group of citizens that are outraged over the repeated and deliberate violations of our city's charter. One in particular being the May of 2020 resolution passed by four counselors instructing our then-city manager to lay off four police officers. Not only did you knowingly violate our charter that evening after repeated warnings on record, you then turned right around and placed our city manager on administrative leave because she ethically refused to break the charter. We want you to know that we fully intend to pursue every effort required to stop this madness and insist any counselor that voted yes to that violation, step down from office immediately. Your consensus of stating that you acted as one body in this motion is a weak defense at best, in my opinion. Councils are designed to enable individual votes, each person submitting their decision, and the majority vote is then sent into motion. Article C 9 reads very clearly as follows. "Neither the city counselor," here's the key words, "nor any of its members, including the mayor, shall in any manner dictate the appointment or removal of any city administrative officers or employees, et cetera, et cetera." These words could not be any clearer. I would also like to address the city's perception of any words within Article C 9 and C 10. Not one person's perception of these words and that article even matter. What does matter is the perception of those words perceived by a 61-year veteran arbitrator, a PhD, and a professor of Cornell University of School, University School, excuse me, of industrial labor and relations. I would think this person's word perception of C 9 and C 10, since it's legally binding, should be respected and not have his many accomplishments insulted by informing the public that he is, quote, "just an arbitrator." In reference to Steve Jelly's comment on the news stating that there are no grounds to have these four counselors step down, I would like to inform him that he doesn't even have the authority to determine whether or not there are grounds. Our city charter, and our city charter did. These counselors took an oath, January of 2020, to abide by our charter, which they have violated with clear intent and disregard. We, the citizens of Augsburg, the ones whom you worked for and put you for in that seat, will continue our pursuit to have you removed legally if you do not step down now. Any potential dollars saved by hastily slashing public servant employees will sure to be gobbled up quickly in the countless number of lawsuits you are and will be facing. Please do the right thing for Augsburg. Step down, take a seat, and watch what we can do when we come together as a community. Amazing and wondrous things can happen when you properly and respectfully operate a city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
The next individual is registered as Doug Loffler and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. Mr. Loffler, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to say to Mr. Scully, that was a great opening statement tonight. It's just very disappointing that it took a whole year for you to realize that. I am shocked and disappointed by the many childish and bullying acts that this administration have and it continues to perform. It is very sad to see this administration stoop to the level that this community is witnessing. In athletics, we always talk about trusting each other to be successful, whether it's in the gym, on the field, the family room, the school room, office room, the government room. Good things happen. When we are at our best, we also trust in each other. If it isn't present, anything is possible. If it is absent, nothing is possible. Trust is missing with this administration and I don't think we can get it back. This city needs new leadership if we are going to move forward in a positive direction. I, along with many taxpayers, consider your conduct as a whole to be very concerning, disheartening, and unprofessional, to warrant the titles of mayor, counselor, and city manager. Everything you have did, how this administration went about accomplishing your agenda this year showed nothing but, and I'm going to quote you, Mr. Scully, "is sheer incompetence on your part." Do the right thing for this community and resign. Let us move forward in a positive manner. After numerous warnings and knowingly and blatantly violating the city charter to suit your own agendas, the recent decision by an arbitrator that you violated Section C 9 of the charter is self-explanatory. It just looks like we are going to use taxpayers' dollars to fight the taxpayer. It will be very interesting to see how much time our city manager spends on protecting the majority of the council. We all know he wouldn't do that for the minority because they try to hold him accountable and challenge, challenge him on many fronts. In talking with a good friend of mine today, his comment was, "The city manager's claim that this was a group action and the charter only covers individual actions seems to me a big stretch." An individual member of council can't fire city employees, nor has one ever tried. Remember, you individual majorities all voted reasonably and reasonably yes. And quoting the mayor on social media, he said, "I decide the fate of the taxpayer." Well, the taxpayer will have the last word. Once again, do the right thing for this community and resign. Let us move forward in a positive direction. And as my friend said, stay tuned as the bird turns. Thank you very much for your time and blah, blah, blah.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
The next individual is registered as Justin Polniak and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. It appears your line is open.
Good evening, council. I'm the union president for the PBA. As you already know, the union filed a grievance in May of 2020, which claimed a violation of the city charter and collective bargaining agreement when it passed a resolution directing the city manager to lay off four police officers, among other things. The matter went to arbitration where an arbitrator determined that the city had in fact violated both the charter and the contract when it passed the resolution. According to the charter, a violation of the provisions in question shall result in forfeiture of office. We know that there were four counselors that voted in favor and three that voted against passing the resolution. The four that voted in favor are required to forfeit their offices according to the law of the city. We are aware that the city's defense is that the resolution was passed as a body, not as a. We are aware that the city's defense is that the resolution was passed as a body, not as individuals. I don't find this argument compelling, nor does our union rep, Jose Manjares, who told me that the city's position is as meritorious as the city's defense to the original grievance, specifically that the resolution had no legal significance. Jose said that this is nothing short of verbal gymnastics and bali-hoo. In short, it is without merit. For the reasons I'm making respectful demand that councillors Skelly, Reish, Dilibah, and Fisher forfeit their office immediately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
The next individual is registered as Teresa Loffler, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. Mrs. Loffler, it appears you are self muted. Mayor, would you like me to move on and circle back?
Yes, please.
The next individual is registered as James McCarthy, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, I had a speech roll for tonight, and I decided to throw that speech out because it's pretty much the same thing you hear at every council meeting. You just probably just listen to it and just think blah, 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 blah. So I changed it up. I just wanted to let you know, I voted my entire life since I was eighteen years old in every national election, state election, and city election. When I do so, when I pick a candidate, I don't pick by party lines. I pick by candidates that share my views and my opinions and my values. When my candidate doesn't win, I don't sit there for two years, four years, whatever the term is, and complain about the people that beat my candidate. I accept it, and I accept that the majority of the people voted for these people to represent us. And my life is not going to be over with because my guy didn't make it in the office, or my girl didn't make it in the office. My life won't be over with. You know, I can live with that. And I always hope for every candidate, for every office is successful because their success, that's what improves my quality of life, if they're successful. So, of course, I want everybody to be successful. With that being said, I do probably too much complaining on Facebook, and it's not because my candidates didn't win. The reason I do my complaining is because the candidates that did win won through lies and they're governing by breaking contracts and violating rules, the city charter. Two meetings ago, councillor Fisher stated that there were going to be several changes to this charter made in 2021, corrected a statement to that he'd like to see made to the charter in 2021. The city charter was made to hold government officials in line, to keep them in line and to hold them accountable. It's not, it's not a rulebook that the governing body changes to suit their agenda so they can fulfill whatever agendas that they have in mind. I'm not going to ask you to resign because I know you aren't going to. I can tell councillor Fisher every time somebody asks you to resign, you're standing there and shrug your head, "No." But what I am going to say is, there has been a mass exodus of professional employees here in the city. And if you are really wondering why, then you must be blind. We all know why these professional, long-term city employees left. It was because of morale, and it's because of workplace environment. Their contracts are constantly being ignored and violated. The firefighter's contract has recently been violated with the new minimum staffing clause being totally neglected. And I'm sure that's going to be another arbitrator's decision on the union's behalf against the city. Please adhere to the charter. Those rules are there for you to abide by. I understand you've got ambitious goals, and you feel the only way that you can accomplish those goals is to violate the charter and violate contracts, but that's not the right way to do things. I ask you to do what Mr. Price said and be honorable. You took a pledge when you took your oath of office to uphold the Constitution and the city charter. Please, from here on out, fulfill your obligations. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
You will thank me, Steve.
Kathy?
The next individual is registered as Carol Shaver, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. It appears your line is open.
Good evening. My name is Carol Shaver, and I chose to be a lifelong resident of Augsburg. I know all of you and all your families. I take pride and comfort in knowing who's in each vehicle you meet every day. Today, I'm ashamed and frankly embarrassed to admit to anyone that I live here. Augsburg has become a laughing stock. Clearly, the majority of council are not politicians who play by the rules. Councillors are elected for the people, by the people, to represent the people. The majority chooses not to. Clear-cut examples are violating the city charter, violating contracts, blocking City Hall, denying access to attorneys, blocking citizens on social media, disregarding necessary grant applications, utilizing a leased vehicle for purposes other than its true intention, bullying and taunting employees and citizens. The list goes on. Councillor members are responsible for and responsive to the citizens who elected them. We have a city charter. We have binding collective bargaining agreements. They exist for specific reasons. Yes, the majority and the hatchet, who've been given too many hats, but I'll get into that later, have blatantly and illegally disregarded them too many times to count. However, I'll wager a great lawyer will know and utilize that number. Mr. Jelly stated, and I quote, "They will break the charter again." That's an admission of corruption with more to come. Voting openly in council, the majority is duplicitous. Let's look at the people, the good people, the exemplary employees, the career employees that have either been pushed out, shamed, retired, resigned, quit, or simply ran away from our city government as we see it today, primarily because they would not work in the environment that has been created in the last thirteen months. Seriously, take a minute, maybe several, write their names down, the ones who have left. It's not business as usual. When Mr. Jelly states, and I quote, "If your father retires, he could save a job." How rude and totally unprofessional. Stellar employees have been attacked personally, emotionally, and financially. Now, onto the Augsburg Fire Department. This I take personally. My husband was a career firefighter. That job almost took his life. Terry suffered a stroke that initiated during a training exercise. You know what? He'd do it all over again. Because once a firefighter, always a firefighter. And that's the same for any first responder. The pseudo-chief is not. Basic fire duties are tasks of running the department, including supervising officers and firefighters at emergency scenes, along with training and equipping them for their respective duties. Mr. Jelly has not been to a single response yet. He doesn't even go to the fire station. The union agreed through binding arbitration to reduce their number through attrition. Due to what some might call some unsavory tactics, the department is below that number. As a result of the self-serve timing of a convenient hiring freeze, they will not be made whole. Mr. Fisher stated pre-election that it was fake news that the OFD and the OPD would be cut. Well, in a controversial year, you've shown that that was your intention all along. Instead of being accomplished through attrition, as per the contract, you succeeded through bullying and union busting, oh, yeah, and violating the charter. Just a reminder, neither the OFD or the OPD are in contract negotiations at this time. Clearly, the majority has never been involved with contract negotiations. You each have an ax to grind. There is no place for that in council chambers. You know what? I want my life back. You know, the one where the citizens of Augsburg didn't have to helicopter City Hall to ensure democracy, First Amendment rights, city charter, and binding contracts were followed. That is what we elect competent councillors for. I am sick of hearing the old landslide election result story. The promises not kept speak volumes. I can say with a hundred percent certainty that if the election were held today, the majority would be gone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
The next individual is registered as Brian Mitchell, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted.
Good evening. Can I have a read to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Reish, I'd like to say thank you for coming on camera. It's actually nice to see your face that you're in attendance. We do appreciate it. As Mr. Tully started this off with a great speech, we did a little question and answer with the mayor. So I'm just going to come out and ask the question flat out. Mr. Mayor, will you resign?
Brian, this isn't a question and answer. Do you have?
Whoa, 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 whoa. It was a few minutes ago. How come it is not now?
Well, Brian, I had, like, you know, had something interesting, and I wanted to ask him advice, but...
You don't think this is interesting? This is what everybody's calling and asking you. Are you going to resign?
Brian, you haven't said anything interesting in any of your calls. So you have something interesting now? Please share it.
Derek, can you tell us how your criminal charge is coming along?
Brian, do you have something about city business?
Yes, I just asked you. Are you going to resign?
Is that it, Brian? Is that it, Brian?
Can I ask councillor Dilibah, is he even present?
Kathy? Please, the next person.
I'm talking. I got five minutes to address the council.
Mayor, can you wish me to move on?
Yes, please.
I'll call back.
The next individual is registered as Jason Bouchard, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted.
Good evening, councillors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, hi, guys. I should be here talking about the application for the Safer Grant and bringing us from nineteen to twenty, as has been promised previously. Those are very important and at the top of what I want to say. But what we're here tonight to discuss is the most recent charges about violation of the charter. I have a couple quotes here with me. One is, "There is no excuse in not following the charter." These people know what's in the charter. That's the holy Bible for the city. I think they lost the public trust when they didn't follow that. That's Steve Fisher from October nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, pre-election. The next one, it is their job to defend the city charter, and they should have defended the city charter. Instead, they found an excuse. That's councillor and deputy mayor John Reish from the same electoral profile in twenty nineteen. Gentlemen, this is laid out there for us to follow, and that's what people elected you for. We can continue to cite the landslide victory, which you will.
Jason, Jason, were these comments made about the illegal election of Mike Powers? Just, I just want to get clarification of it.
Well, okay, this is not a question and answering session, but what I will tell you...
I'm trying to understand where you're going.
A question during this. Yes, it was made precisely about that, so we can only follow the parts of the charter that we want to. Is that what you're agreeing to?
Thank you, Jason. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone have a good night. Everyone stay safe. Thank you for your support.
Take care, Jason.
So real quick for the record, Mike, seeing that you've thrown me into the...
I was just trying to understand, Mike, what the context was.
That's fine. I just want to explain what I tried to offer up to this council and was shut down. With the actual charter and the way the election rolled out, the majority of council had every ability to be able to change that ruling by the total votes taken by each and every candidate that ran, and the lowest vote getter would get the two-year term. Now, you had the ability to bring that forward and change it, and I offered it. You chose not to take that.
I think you're incorrect, but thank you.
I know I'm incorrect. We were in chamber when I offered it, and you shut me down.
No.
That, you still have the ability to do that, and if you chose to do that, then you could fix the problem that you're complaining about.
Yeah, the city attorney told me, "No, Mike." And then he changed his tune after the vacation of that during that time. So that's not true.
I'm addressing the mayor, Steve. I...
Oh, okay.
We can talk about this in items for discussion if you like. You had every opportunity to rectify it, and you chose not to.
Thank you, Mike. Now, could you say that again, Steve, please?
I said, "We're going to rectify mics in November."
I think, I think that's a good way of doing it. Okay. Kathy, anyone else, Kathy?
The next individual is registered as Margaret Haggerty. I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. It appears your line is open now. It appears you are self muted again, and it's open now.
This is Margaret Haggerty, a city resident, and I just, I just wanted to let you folks know that there's some feedback coming from some of your computers, and it sounds a little wonky. So if you have a couple things going in the same room, could you possibly turn one off or muted or something so that we're not hearing such feedback? Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Next, Kathy?
I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, and this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have three letters. "Lady and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you in advance for reading this email as correspondence tonight. I'm writing with several questions and comments as follows. Number one, Steve Jelly, you have stated that with the cuts in the fire department in 2020, the city actually ended the year in the black. What do you believe the bottom line will be in 2021? Will it be in the black or red? Number two, I will tell you my prediction. We will end on the deep red financially, as I see there will be legal fees of monumental proportions due to the disregard you and the majority have for our city charter and due process for union employees. Number three, please update us on the many workplace violence cases that were filed in 2020. Number four, will anybody in the majority step down from their office for violating the charter? If not, why not? Number five, what will be the corrective action taken to prevent further breaches of the charter? Number six, when will City Hall be reopened to the public? What benchmark numbers of COVID cases will determine if it is safe to operate as usual at City Hall? I have never been embarrassed to be a citizen of Augsburg until now. It is bad timing to reduce the numbers of police and firefighters during a global pandemic. Shame on you. In closing, may God be with the citizens of this city. Carrie De Mars. Mayor and council, I am totally amazed by the actions of the current council. I'm really amazed by the continued BS from members of the council in regards to the city working together for a better Augsburg. I have never seen so much infighting ever in my entire life as a resident of Augsburg, especially with the current council being influenced by outside sources as to what is better for the city of Augsburg, its fire department and police department. I feel as a citizen of Augsburg and a taxpayer that some people don't realize Augsburg cannot afford a seven-year contract, which is unheard of anywhere. I am amazed that the former mayor and council approved this as they were leaving office, thinking it was a great thing, but common sense should have told them it was not. Further negotiations have come to be forthcoming just to keep the city of Augsburg afloat. One easy solution would be to have all of these people who collect a check from Augsburg to move into the city and pay taxes like the rest of us. Since when did rookie policemen go after the mayor? That sounds like a personal vendetta by someone within the police department towards the current mayor. It is ridiculous to think that someone within the police department gave an order to a rookie patrolman to take pictures of the mayor and his activities. I cannot believe this is being allowed. I would have to think this would be..." I cannot believe this is being allowed. I would have to think this would be misconduct, but what do I know? Apparently, the police department doesn't answer to anyone. John Mark. Augsburg City Council, I have been watching, listening, and reading the activity of your actions with much interest for the past 13 months. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Augsburg, and though I follow the political ongoings in our city, I have never felt the need to be vocal. While I've not always agreed with decisions made by past city councils or city managers, I have never been compelled to write a letter until now. After following all of the motions that this council has been passing with complete disregard for our city charter, I feel I cannot be quiet any longer. I am deeply saddened and dismayed by the actions that the majority of this council and newly hired city manager have done to shred our city charter and divide our city. This document is to our city what the Constitution is to our country. It is in place to dictate what our city council members, city manager, and city employees may or may not do while in the service of Augsburg, New York. While it is a living document that needs review and updating on a regular basis, what the majority of our current city council has done is disgusting. You have shown no regard for our city charter. Last fall, over 300 concerned citizens signed a petition for a referendum to be placed on the November 2020 ballot. This was done by the rules set in our city charter, and the majority of our city council voted to ignore this petition and go against what our city charter states is our civic right. Now you have violated it again with the negotiations with our police union. You have done this with malice and knowledge that you are breaking our city charter. You have heard from many citizens over the past year, many of whom were on previous charter commissions that reviewed and made recommendations to update our city charter. You have disregarded these citizens even when they told you that your actions were breaking our city charter. You were elected to represent Augsburg, and with your total disregard of our city charter, you are in no way, shape, or form representing us. You should be ashamed of your past actions. We concerned citizens are at the point where you have left us no choice but to work to remove you from your offices. You are a detriment to our city, and it is time that we, the people of Augsburg, take action to stop your efforts that are destroying our city. We will not stop until justice is served and our city charter is once again followed. Michael Brasha.
And that's it?
That's it, ma'am.
Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda. That's the claims as enumerated in general fund warrant number 03-2021 in the amount of $760,912.37, and library warrant number 03-2021 in the amount of $28,791.66, and capital warrant fund number 03-2021 in the amount of $1,596,997.12, and community development warrant fund number 03-2021 in the amount of $76.2, and community renewal fund warrant number 03-2021 in the amount of $9,400, as audited, be and the same hereby are ordered paid. I so move.
I'll second it.
Would Kathy, would you call the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy? Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reisch?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
Um, we have one appointment tonight. Make a motion to reappoint Mike Frery to a five-year term in the vacancy committee term to begin February 8th, 2021, and end December 31st, 2025. I so move.
Mayor, could I interrupt just a second? Late this afternoon, Mr. Frery informed me that he is now permanently left resident in the city and moved to his new home in Morristown. He will no longer be able to fulfill this obligation. So I asked council to submit another name this evening if there is one, or I will bring it back next meeting.
Who's currently on it?
Mr. Doug Loffler and Ms. Laura Ashley. Mike, Mr. Mike Frery served as the chairman. The chairman's seat is vacant. We have an individual, Mr. Mark Knowlton, that has expressed interest. I'll leave that for council discussion now.
I would like to possibly nominate Mike Thule. He's pretty educated as far as things go. Who else would recommend that, or if he would maybe possibly interested in it?
I think possibly-
I'd like to nominate Mark. I think he would be fine for this.
I'd like to vet the community, seeing that the vacancy has just occurred as Mr. Frery has moved out of town, to be able to vet some community members and before we make a decision.
Um, I like Mark Knowlton, too. I'm with Steve on that. I would be a second if you wanted to his nomination.
I'll second Nicole's if Mr. Thule would want to do it.
Kathy, could you call the roll on this?
Just a clarification, if I could. So this is, this is a council decision. It's not, it's not the mayor's choice with the council agreeing. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure on this.
Counselor Reese, this is in fact a council appointment.
I think it's unfair to appoint somebody since the citizenry hasn't had a chance to even know that there was an opening here until just a moment ago, and I think we should hold off before we vote on anybody to see if there's any other interest, in all fairness to the community, but, you know.
Yeah, that, you know, Mr. Knowlton can provide his name as a candidate and, you know, see if anybody else wants to serve the community on the vacancy committee.
Well, seeing, seeing that the council makes a decision anyway, and you've got two that said yes, and you just seconded Nicole's, I, I think it should go forward.
I agree.
Carol, she wouldn't have seconded. I mean-
Well, I mean, this is what, this is what discussion's for, Steve, you know, and I, you know, I mean, that's what we're talking.
Excuse me. You said I seconded Nicole's. I second Nicole's for two.
We're still discussing it, and Counselor Reese brought up a good point, and so did Counselor Scamperly, and so the discussion's ongoing.
But we both, we, you know, you voted and we voted both to second Mike, so, um- Kathy would-
I'll pull back on my second, and then, and I think we should be vetting this through the community.
Absolutely. I think it's completely unfair to the community to not give anybody a chance to throw their hat in the ring on this.
Well, I think we have a good candidate here.
Of course you do. Is there a conflict by anybody here?
What would be a conflict? Do, I don't do business with them.
Is Mr. Fisher? Aren't you partners?
What would that, what would that?
I don't have anything to do with it.
I'm just asking.
You know, he lives in the community. He lives in Morristown. I mean, he lives, no, he lives, he, I am in business with him, but he lives in the community. He's lived here his whole time. He pays taxes. He expressed interest in it, and so I'm bringing him forward. Vote no for him then. I don't really care.
I'm not debating that. I'm not, Mr. Knowlton's a fine man. He comes from a long line of law enforcement. I got no issues with Mr. Knowlton. I just asked a question.
Okay, then, then let's have a vote, please. Kathy?
So we're voting on a motion by Counselor Fisher to appoint Mark Knowlton, which was seconded by Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Point, point order, Mayor. Point order here. Should this be done under new business, seeing that the appointment and the agenda was to reappoint Mr. Frery?
It was amended.
Yeah, I think we're good. I think we're good.
It was amended. It was a motion, it was a resolution to support an individual after a discussion. I'm just asking.
I'll amend it then, Mike, okay, to put his name in there instead of Mike's.
I'll second it.
I'm going to vote no again. Nothing against Mr. Knowlton, but I'd like to just see a little bit of fairness to the community and give everybody a chance to, to express interest rather than a handpicked little side job going on here.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Again, you're on the fence. So Kathy, can you please call the roll for everyone?
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
No.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reisch?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
Approved.
Okay, we are on items for council action. Our only item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Vida Nova LLC for BOA pre-development services associated with Department of State contract C1001686. Whereas the city of Augsburg has been awarded a New York State Predevelopment Brownfield Opportunity Area Grant to develop and implement marketing strategies for catalytic brownfield sites within our 330-acre BOA. And whereas grant funding has been awarded from the New York State Department of State in the amount of $198,000, of which 90% or $178,200 is grant funded. And whereas the city solicited proposals through an open and competitive request for proposals process. And whereas Vida Nova LLC has proven their capacity and ability to perform the work to the city's satisfaction. Now therefore be resolved that the city manager or his designee is authorized to enter into a agreement with Vida Nova LLC for a sum not to exceed $75,000 for strategic marketing and pre-development services associated with the designated project on behalf of the city. Be it further resolved that expenses for this project will be charged to account H72101 and offset by program grant revenue.
So moved.
I'll second that. Discussion, please.
I reviewed it, but I forgot. Is our timeframe about a year, Andrea?
Um, this initial work will get us through to September. We have a three-year contract with the state to complete our deliverables.
And the rest of the money can be used for other things?
The, the rest of the money can be used to complete the deliverables of our work plan. Um, this is step one, kind of putting together an incentive package, understanding what the council and community are hoping to do, how they want to market those properties, if we're looking for specific prices. So this is step one of the overall marketing plan. Um, step two would follow, and we would use the remaining grant funds.
Yeah, thanks.
So Vida Nova has, has done this work before for us for Diamond National Property. Uh, they've got an awful lot of the marketing information already done that they did. Uh, I remember sitting in on these meetings and what, uh, I would suspect that hiring this company is going to save us a lot of money because so much has already been done and probably put us a little bit more on the, on the fast track. Can anybody speak to that?
Vida Nova is the primary consultant that did complete the city's step-two brownfield nomination study. So they did do, they're very familiar with Augsburg, our demographic, our needs, the overall kind of vision of the community, although that may have changed since our designation in 2016. So I do think it's a fair statement, Counselor, that they will be able to jump in and have a good understanding of the community and where we're going.
Okay.
Okay, for done with discussion, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reisch?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
Good job, Andrea.
Uh, we have three items of, for old business, and we will begin with City Manager Stephen Jelly.
Evening, counselors. I want to provide an update and get some guidance from you on the number of topics. I'd like to start off tonight with where we are with sales tax collection negotiations with the county. Um, I think just a short summary, we all know, the county has rejected each and every offer that the committee put forward. The most recent, um, initiative by the two legislators assigned to this area, Legislature Forsyth and Legislature Reagan, uh, and also Legislature Kern, uh, to get us a one-year extension to put us through, and that, that also appears to not be going forward at this point. So I'm just looking to have some communication with council about where you want to go next. Um, we've got less than 10 months to get ready to collect our own sales tax, work our own program. It's not a possible feat, but it's certainly one that's going to require a lot of work and a lot of work in a short amount of time. So unless there are some other ideas, uh, my plan is to continue, um, working towards gathering all the information to provide you a presentation of what preemption looks like, the steps that will need to be taken, uh, working with Senator Ritchie's office, something in Walzick's office for the local home rule legislation that will be required, and having Gray and Gray associates work to help provide an aggregate number of what we think we could collect based on getting the 2020 sales collection data for the county from the state as we did last year. So there's a lot of work to be done, and before I get started upon, I just want to make sure, uh, council, uh, this is your intent or your desire to have us, the staff, start moving forward on this.
Could we, um, that, that's fine, but could we discuss that in executive session at the next meeting, please? Our, our strategy going forward? If that's the council's pleasure.
Yeah, Counselor Reese, I can look into it again. We, we looked tonight, um, and we couldn't find what we thought was, was an allowable reason for us to go into executive session, uh, since we're not currently negotiating an active contractor matter. Um, I believe the county also faced the same issue when they had attempted or are attempting to use executive session to discuss this matter. So I can, can have legal, I'll look into it again, but I'm afraid we may have to appoint a committee then, uh, so we can work, um, you know, somewhat on this in committee form, but I'm, um, it's, it is February, and I just need to call everyone's attention. There is a significant sense of urgency here that we've, we've got to get going.
We can't, uh, we can't meet with our attorney in executive session and get guidance on a, on a contract?
Counselor, unfortunately, there, there isn't a contract here at this point. I, it's the, you know, our negotiations for the, for the agreement. I wouldn't, I don't know if we'd call this sales tax distribution agreement that we had a contract, and of course, now we're not talking about that. We're, we're talking about preempting or potentially our options for, you know, what our options are. So I can, uh, the, excuse me, I've asked the attorneys to provide a summary for all of you. I hope to have that before the week is over, uh, as far as what, what the legal options are, and I'll provide all that to you by email before the week's over.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, I, personally, I think it's a great idea that we get started because there's, there is a lot of work to do. Um, you know, been over a year now, you know, you go over, actually, Dan and I went over last January, and, um, you know, it started out with, uh, they want $11 million over 10 years, and been a long, hard year of negotiations, ended up nowhere. We did get a one-year extension, so that's something. We did get a one-year extension, so that's something. Uh, but the fact is, we get 6.44% of all the sales tax collected in the county. We, that is an actual figure that came, that was developed through actual sales tax collection over 10 years by the city when we entered into the contract with the county. That being said, the city of Augsburg is over 9%, close to 10% of the, um, population of the county. I believe that while we, um, since that time, a lot of people have, do live on the outskirts of Augsburg, but they do shop in Augsburg. And during the time when, when, uh, sales tax was collected by the city, um, it was a time when, uh, many people went to, uh, Jefferson County, to Watertown, to the malt shop. Today we shop online in our homes and that, that, and that comes back to our city. We will also get credit for our vehicles, our campers, our boats, anything that's registered inside the city. While we do not presently have an, um, power dealership, we will get credit for all those vehicles. And the other thing is, and it's an unknown, but there is a possibility with online shopping that, uh, we may get credit for everything in our zip code, which could be over 6,000 people in addition. So I feel comfortable since the, the only thing, uh, alternative is to give the county whatever money they want, want to take from us. They're gonna, they're gonna tell us the amount they're gonna give us and we have no choice but to accept it. And that can change. And once we are, um, a big concern was, uh, also was towns and villages. Uh, they united with Augsburg and they really stuck their necks out. And by doing so, I was very concerned about the county down the road taking their money, but the county has done a resolution, given them 10 years. And that makes me very comfortable with, uh, Augsburg collecting their own and that's what I had to offer. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
It's my understanding that, uh, that 10-year resolution with county does not hold water. Uh, if this contract with Augsburg expires. So something that the, uh, county attorney may want to check into. Uh, another question I have for the city manager is, uh, has, uh, Gray and Gray giving us, uh, some sort of an estimate as a dollar figure for doing this sort of research? You know, I, I, I'm in support of getting a comptroller back for the uh, I worry about spending too much money, uh, on a private entity doing the work that we could be doing in-house.
Yeah, so, excuse me, Counselor, I've, uh, I've just started to put together what a, a statement of work would look like so they can, uh, provide us an estimate of that. Um, figuring out using, what, what I'm doing is, is ensuring transparency with how we're using, uh, that contracted service, very similar to we use the, the legal service. Um, and so our cost this year to provide the services, uh, that the comptroller provided will actually have us $50,000 or $60,000 savings from, from paying the full-time employee. And then each of these special projects, uh, that comes up, this isn't something we, we would do, um, uh, well in-house, especially with this short-term notice. It's gonna require a team of people to dissect a data set with 20,000 businesses. So I, I would say to you, this work here would be separate if we had an in-house comptroller for not serving.
Uh, one other thing is with help from Patty Ritchie and Senator Ritchie and, and, uh, Mark Walzick, um, Assemblyman, is that with their legislation, years ago, we collected one and a half of three cents inside the city limit. And with their help, um, that will become two cents of, two cents of the four cents collected uh, inside the city limits. So the county would, uh, well, of course, the state gets their four cents and then the county will get two cents in our city limits. We will get two cents and, um, I really think we're gonna come out ahead, but, uh, again, to what Dan said, um, I do worry about these towns and villages. The, the one thing that's came from this difficult year of negotiations with the county is, uh, a, a re-establishment between the city and the towns and villages, the, the mayor and there's, and the town supervisors. And I hope, I hope we can build on that in the future and re-establish ourselves as, uh, as a, a, a whole community inside the county with them. It's been, uh, it's really been a, a wonderful experience, uh, getting to know them and, and working with them. And, um, I, I know they're disappointed also that, uh, we couldn't come to some agreement with the county.
What do you got next, Steve?
Okay, so, uh, the second, uh, handout in your packet is the, uh, the latest on the sewer rate analysis projection. So again, I submit this mostly tonight just for your, uh, review and, and updating. As we talked last time, uh, we were really been trying to work down the cost to treat. What is our, our exact cost to treat a gallon of waste? So I provided you tonight, uh, a one-page summary and then again, the three models that we're using. So you can see now, uh, as we've really fineted down what we think are our costs associated with, with doing business and what our revenues, uh, projections will look like. Uh, this, this is where we are now. The, the next step in this process is for me to look at how we're conducting business. Uh, you'll notice here, doesn't really matter which model we choose. Um, we've, we've got to either drastically increase, uh, revenues or we've got to reduce expenses. So, uh, the next report for this, I'm gonna look at, at everything on the expense line. Is there a cheaper way of doing business? Is there a more efficient way of doing business? Is there revenues that we haven't projected correctly? Uh, what if we get a project with another town, et cetera? So I just, I want, uh, do you have this? Uh, please send me, you know, questions. I tried to lay this out in a very, uh, simple format. Uh, I assure all of you, this topic is anything but simple to try to figure out. The formulas, the methodologies in this are all, I think, good, uh, good, good processes and good plans, but there certainly could be other ideas that folks would have. Uh, we intend to make this available on the city website, uh, so that, uh, folks in the community can see what we're doing to try to ensure that we keep Augsburg sewer rates, uh, as low as possible while continuing to upgrade the, this system. So unless there's any questions, I really just submitted that tonight for information about, uh, where we are on sewer rate projection.
Is that it, Steve, for everything?
Uh, last topic, uh, just wanted to update on police reform. Uh, as you all know, we had our first meeting, uh, last week. Uh, I think everything went well. We had really, real good participation from the steering group. Um, for everyone's clarification, again, the purpose of the steering group is, is really to help just establish the program, how we're gonna move forward, uh, to make sure that we don't leave anybody out. We don't leave any process out that would do, do us well. Uh, the committee, uh, the committee, uh, was, was all together unanimous on the first step here is getting out the community input on police reform questionnaire. That's up available on the city website. Uh, you can do it online or you can print a copy, mail it back in or drop it off. Uh, so this was our first step. We're gonna meet again next week. And I believe, uh, from there, we'll be planning to have, uh, stakeholder and community input meetings. Uh, different than a public hearing on what would be the ultimate recommendations that go to council. This will be the opportunity for groups in the community to be able, uh, to sit down and get together and, and get all the concerns and input, um, that we want to do. We're moving forward. Uh, we've got a pretty rapid timeline to put this together, but I feel confident we've got the right, uh, group together now. Have lots of inquiries from, uh, other stakeholders in the organization wanting to participate and ensure that, uh, we have a, a good effort here.
Could we, uh, could we do some ads in, uh, North Country Now? Perhaps it has a link to it. I, I've talked to a lot of people and they, they don't even know this is going on. Either in North Country Now or Facebook or both or whatever.
Yes, sir. Uh, it's, it's up on Facebook and, uh, we will be doing, uh, some ads with, uh, with all the, uh, the news media. I think, uh, tonight, just talking about it, uh, we've got, uh, a couple of members of the media in the room with us. So I, um, I believe we'll get some good advertising tonight that we've got this out and available.
Okay, thanks.
Um, it's all right for old business, Mayor.
Okay, so we have one item for new, new business and we will begin, uh, with the Director of, uh, Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Say a couple words before Andrea gets started. Uh, in our continued effort, I've had dialogue, uh, with most of you on, on grants. So on our continued dialogue to, uh, let you know what we're doing with grants, the grants we're working. Um, we wanted to tonight give you a, a short brief on the Community Development Block Grants, uh, Program. Just some highlights of what we've done over the years and the opportunities that are out there now and some of the things that we're looking at to pursue for that effort.
Good evening. Um, so there is a current notice of availability of funding out for community development block grant funding. There's approximately $20 million available in three different categories. Um, the cat, the first category is public infrastructure. Awards are made, um, up to $1 million and, uh, the caveat here is that projects in order to be eligible for CDBG funding have to provide primary benefit or principal benefit to those individuals that qualify at low to moderate income. For projects that impact, um, a city, an entire community, uh, like our wastewater treatment plant, that community must have at least 51% low to moderate income individuals. And presently, we do not meet that threshold criteria. Um, we are at 50%. So under public infrastructure, it is my understanding that for citywide benefit projects like our wastewater treatment facility, we are not eligible to apply. Um, we would have to pull apart portions of the project and we would have to delineate a project area, conduct a program, um, an income survey. And based on the results of that income survey, if the area within the community that is determined to benefit from the project meets the threshold criteria of 51% or greater, then that specific project benefiting that particular, um, area could be eligible for application. So at this time, it's really not something that we have a project ready to go for, um, for application, nor do we have the back-up confirmation to submit to the state to determine if a particular neighborhood, uh, would be eligible. The second category is public facilities. This is primarily to address, um, handicap accessibility or barriers to handicap accessibility. Again, low to moderate income individuals or special needs populations. So at this time, we also don't understand, we don't believe that this, um, particular program would be beneficial to any of the projects that are ongoing and have a funding need. It is however, a program, um, you know, that the city could look to in the future to apply in partnership with outside organizations that do provide housing to low to moderate income individuals or serve other services to low to moderate income individuals. And the last category is community planning. Um, there are two subcategories of community planning. That is, community needs assessment and preliminary engineering reports. Awards are up to $50,000 in the particular category. And I am having some conversations with the Department of Public Works to determine if we have any projects that are in need of preliminary engineering study. Um, for example, water line or sewer line replacement projects or uh, other projects that we, we know we already have a need for, but we may not have the engineering work completed. So the deadline for these applications is, uh, March, March 5th. Uh, so it's coming up pretty quickly, although we do have some time to pull something together for a preliminary engineering study if, if we do find a good fit there. Um, again, those are up to $50,000 and there's no specific match requirement. Um, so that's, that's the funding that's available right now. I do anticipate, although there's no guarantee, that additional funding through CDBG would be available through, um, a future round of CFAs or consolidated funding applications. Traditionally, with 2020 being the exception, those announcements are available in the spring. Um, and from everything that I'm hearing, we should anticipate those, um, announcements being made this spring. So this won't be the last of the CDBG funding rounds. Uh, there should be some coming in the future. Um, I'm happy to give an overview of past or move on to the
Let's keep going, top of the machine.
Also, at this time, there are two other notable funding sources that are available and applicable to projects that we have ongoing here in the city. The first is the Northern Border Regional Commission and this shouldn't sound new to you. Uh, we do have a Northern Border Regional Commission grant now and this is one of the very few funding sources that we have not yet tapped into for our wastewater treatment plant projects. The funding availability level has been increased from $500,000 to $1 million. And on the whole, our wastewater
Counselor, we ask you, we get a lot of backbeat.
Is an eligible project under the category of, um, titled revitalizing and modernize essential infrastructure in border region communities. So I, I do think it's worth pursuing to determine if we would be eligible. We have plenty of time to prepare an application and I know that our engineering team and the development authority would be helpful in getting that together. Um, applications are due by May 14th. And they do highly encourage, uh, letters of intent and those are due March 26th. So you'll be hearing more about this at subsequent, uh, council meetings where, where you all will, will be given the opportunity to, um, make a formal recommendation to apply for that funding. And the last funding that I just wanted to touch base on is Bridge New York. Again, this is not a new funding source. We have applied unsuccessfully for this funding in the past, but, uh, it has recently been announced and the deadline for application is June 9th for bridge applications. This does seem to be, um, a good fit for additional funding to finalize the repairs and improvements to the Lafayette Street Bridge. To date, we are working on repairs, um, with funding secured from former humble woman Addie Jenny, um, in the, to the amount of $375,000. But we're unable to address the spans that are over the Asogashi River. And because they are over the water, they are, they are cost prohibitive for us to pursue at this time. Um, Bridge New York is, does follow the federal aid process, so it does have a very specific set of engineering drawings and construction inspections that would be required if we do, uh, successfully obtain this funding. And therefore, the cost for engineering, it significantly increased from what it would be um, if we just pursued these improvements without this funding source. But, um, accounting for the federal aid process and the outstanding work as we know it, um, we could apply for roughly, um, just under $2 million, uh, approximately, and that would finish the work, uh, on the bridge specifically to the spans that are over the water. Um, so again, I think that we'll be bringing a recommendation to you in the near future. Um, this is a two-step application process that starts with submitting a letter of intent, um, and a draft application to the Department of Transportation who then provides comment. Which you then have the ability to respond to before submitting your final application. Again, the deadline for final application is, uh, June 9th.
On CDBG, could we ask DHCR if, um, if a census tract is eligible, if there happens to be a, uh, a, uh, pump station in that, in that neighborhood? Would, would that qualify if it met those standards?
We did make that request in 2000, in February of 2019 and they determined that that was not eligible.
But, but we can, we can do a, uh, we can do a survey and find an area that's eligible?
If we are able to define a project that specifically has an area of benefit, um, that area can be surveyed. You would have to do, um, an income survey of all of the residents within that neighborhood, that area, um, to determine if that area meets to determine if that area meets the 51% low to moderate income threshold. So really, the example that is often used is if you were dealing with distribution and you were replacing a water line on a two-block section of street, you would identify the households that would benefit from that water line replacement. You would conduct an income survey of just those households. And then based on the results, it would be determined whether or not that project was eligible. It needs to be defined to that extent. And our pump stations are not set up to serve a specific geospatial area. They're not set up by district or by neighborhood. They are set up, in fact, to collectively work together. So we have not, we have had conversations with the state and with our engineering team, and we are not able to clearly delineate an area to the extent that we would need to in order to conduct the income survey that would be required.
I just, you know, like the pump station over on the west side of town, I would venture to guess that that serves, you know, one census tract over there.
Citywide, we do not have a single census tract that, well, they don't look at it on a census tract level. Our lowest income census tract is actually the census tract that is the easternmost portion of the city. And that's because that's where we have our institutionalized populations that don't have income. So there's that.
So could, you know, heavy industrial park pump station, for example, that serves Riverview Correctional Facility? And since they're a, oh, I think they would automatically qualify as a, well, like an institutional facility that, it seemed like it predominantly would serve them. I wonder if that's an approach that could be taken? And whatever the cost of that is...
Yeah, we've got a board set up now, Councilor. We're dissecting every way possible to use the funding to be able to get this last part of the wastewater treatment project funded through grant funds. So however, we can slice it and dice it and dissect it and find the money. That's what we're working on. So we'll take that suggestion as well. Also, for all Counselors' knowledge, Shane and I had a discussion with the state last week. We found an agreement, albeit outdated, still the most current, but it does talk to the pump station on the other side of 37 that only serves the psychiatric center and the other correctional facility being the state's responsibility. So we're working to get them a specific cost, and that would be, so that could be a significant amount of money off the $5 million changer that we discussed last week. So we are, what I wanted to provide you tonight was just, you know, we are working on this, this grant effort as it pertains to the wastewater treatment plant being one of our big focuses. But, you know, looking at the grant process for everything, including, as Andrea was just describing, we know we have a lot of distribution lines that are going to need to be replaced. So we'll start establishing and putting together projects in priority order so we can do those individual projects to replace lines, things that we can specifically tie to a neighborhood. And then the other hand, I want to see was just the most recent grants that have come open. Again, we're looking at all these for applicability. I think one of the ones I'll call your attention to on page two is the Homeland Security Safer Grant for Fire and Emergency Services Staffing. So that period just opened today. We will be looking at the conditions and parameters and determining if there's applicability for use here in the city.
Another option, Steve, in terms of the wastewater treatment plant and the pump station and heavy industrial park, it's worth the conversation with the Department of Corrections to see if they would pay for that upgrade. At one time, the state built the water tower over there to serve those institutions to increase pressure as well as all the lines that ran along 37. So it's worth having that kind of a conversation to defray our costs since it primarily serves them. And also, is USDA open? Are we working on that?
So we have the, we got the contact that you gave me, Counselor Rees, and we'll have an answer this week on what we're doing to see if we're eligible to go back to that with our existing project or if what we've got to break off separately. So I'll have a report back to you on that soon.
Okay.
I expect to call any day from Senator Schumer's office to tell me they'll give us $10 million if John Rees quits out of town to them. Anything else on this? Is that done for new business, Steve?
It's all staff has for new business, sir.
Does anyone have any items for discussion?
Yes, I have a couple items. A gentleman called in earlier regarding suicide and what the community can do to help.
Oh, yes.
He did mention...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear suicide. Go ahead, Dan, go ahead.
Oh, a gentleman called in regarding suicide prevention and asking if we could do anything. He mentioned a grant on that for the city. I don't know what the city can do, but, and then I also had a question. Is there a spot on our new website? And if we don't have one, could we get one that maybe could link people to get help? Not only for suicide, but other public service sort of links throughout the county, things like that. I know, like, the gentleman provided us with a suicide hotline. Maybe if we had a link like that, the city could serve citizens a little bit better and we could prevent something terrible, it would work, you know? Next thing I had, on the wastewater treatment project, are we still under the DEC consent order? And are we getting fined or not?
I believe we're still under the consent order. They usually hand out a fine once a year. It's usually restricted, they can reduce it. Last year, they did not reduce it. I believe it was a $15,000 fine last year. And usually, in the past years, they have reduced it to $7,500.
Okay. I'm just curious, the extra 90 days. I know we're expecting custom materials to be increased and things of that nature for the rebid, but I'm wondering if we're also basically expecting to be fined more for that 90 days? It just doesn't have to be answered tonight. Okay. And then my final, I just want to thank the citizens for calling in tonight, taking an active role in their government, participating and pointing out what they see is good and bad. It's real democracy. And thank you. You had a lot of logical things going on in the state, and everybody was very respectful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have one, Your Honor. But just to piggyback Dan's comments and all the individuals that called in tonight, as Dan says, I thank them for their participation and the well-being of the city of Augsburg. And for the record, I concur with them that it would, in light of the arbitration award and that the violators of the charter should remove themselves from the seat. Well, I guess.
Okay, and this brings us to...
I just, no, I mean, I would like to comment on that. You know, we have a, I just don't know how people think that they're kind of judge jury and get to decide these things. From my perspective, there was no violation of the charter. That's a different interpretation that he came up with. I don't even think that he had the authority on an arbitration decision to, and he's not a lawyer. I mean, generally, generally, I don't think he has a law degree. If he has a PhD, that's not a law degree. And then generally, you cite case law when you make a ruling like that. That's what judges do. So, you know, it's like, the opinion that we got from the attorney, all of this is really premature. But I guess you've made up your mind. From my perspective, there's no violation of the charter. We had two opinions on it. They reviewed it. They told Sarah Purdy it wasn't a violation of the charter. And I respect their opinion more than I do someone that doesn't have a law degree or, you know, it's really a question of interpretation. So I do disagree, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, and this brings us to citizen participation.
The first individual is registered as Penny Shero, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open.
Yes, good evening. First of all, I know I've got a time limit here, so I'll make this quick. The vacancy committee thing, I know you've passed it. The resolution was passed, whoever. It was obvious that it was known in advance that Mike Frary was not going to be able to accept the seat. And other people, including myself, may have wanted to step up and volunteer to help the city out. So I think that definitely deserved more discussion than what was done tonight. That's beside the point. My other point is being the fire department. I think if I'm not mistaken, the firemen want 24, you people want 20. We are now down to 19. Is there somebody who's physically going to fill that position? You say we are in a hiring freeze. Well, if we're going to get technical about this, what about rehiring? That doesn't go under hiring freeze, does it? Maybe we could put one of our firefighters back into the position and have at least 20 until this is all resolved with the fire department. This is the citizen's safety, my family's, the citizens of Augsburg. Fire department hang out there in the wind, and we have 19 now. This is getting a little ridiculous. It's our safety, everybody's safety, including yours. Now, if Mr. Jolly is physically going to go down there and be a fireman, fine. Otherwise, I want at least 20 people out there. And I'm sure there's a lot of other citizens want 20 people in that fire department. You have any answers on whether we are going to put somebody back in that position? This should go far above the hiring freeze. Any answers?
I concur with you, Patty, or Penny, I'm sorry.
Are we going to get another fireman, so we're at least 20?
Dave? Jolly?
Anybody?
Mayor, Mrs. Shero's time's up, but I'll say this. Mr. Shero, the budget calls for 20 firefighter personnel. As I said earlier, I'm looking at all the issues confronting the city going forward from a financial perspective. And as soon as I've got enough information to make a decision, I'm bringing on another firefighter. We will do that. The daily minimum staffing of four firefighters that I've set is being used each and every day, regardless of the overall total of firefighters that are on duty or that are staffed at the fire station. So we're maintaining the daily minimum of four right now. So it's not a firefighter safety issue at this point. And nobody wants to necessarily hear when we're talking about this, but every decision we make has to be about the fiscal well-being of the city. So that's what I'm doing, and I will report back to the council as soon as we've got the information to do that.
Well, is it just your opinion that the safety of the city is not in jeopardy right now? Or is that an overall committee, overall council decision that we're not, our safety isn't jeopardized?
Well, at this point, Mr. Shero, it's the safety and the execution of public safety policies are my responsibilities. So yes, it is my opinion. But what I'm telling you is the number of firefighters on duty at any one given day doesn't have any impact, stays the same, whether we've got 19, 20, or 21 overall on duty at the fire department.
Hey, guys?
Thank you, Penny. Who's next?
The next individual is registered as Scott McRoberts, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open.
Yes, just a couple things. I was wondering, will the city be looking into hiring a comptroller in support of the issues ahead of us with regards to the sales tax? I know currently our city manager is wearing many hats, and to let something like this go by the wayside might not be in the best fiscal interest of the city. So we might want to take a look at removing the hiring freeze for that. Also, curious if the arbitrator's ruling will be posted to the city's website. I recall at the last meeting how excited Mayor Skelly was with the FRB report being posted. So I think it would only be fair if the arbitrator's ruling was also posted on there. Lastly, I would like to ask Counselor Reese with his broad legal expertise if Mr. Knowlton would be able to fill the vacancies with the mayor and the three counselors, if you guys would be eligible to get back in office with Mr. Knowlton. Perhaps you could read the municipal code for once and inform us. Thank you.
Kathy?
The next individual is registered as David Price, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open.
So at the beginning of the meeting, I heard the mayor call the community and talk about how the council has to work together. And then in my initial address, I said that the city residents will be sitting in judgment and see what actions are taken tonight. And then lying in the face of unity, I listened to the mayor mock one of the counselors by saying, "As usual," attack another counselor based on something, an election that occurred over a year ago. I watched as you railroaded and force-fed Mark Knowlton into the vacancy committee. I don't know Mark Knowlton, he might be a great guy, I don't know. But clearly, that was a done deal before they showed up tonight. I listened to Counselor Reese talk about an arbitrator's decision and basically saying he's going to ignore it, saying it doesn't carry any weight. You know, it's an interesting vision community that you have. I promise you that I wouldn't call it Groundhog Day again, and didn't mention Judgment Day. But based on what I'm seeing, we all can't wait for it.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, Dave.
The next individual is registered as Doug Loffler, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'd like to address this to the mayor. Two weeks ago, I asked the question at the council meeting, and this past week or so, I emailed you counselors. I asked the question, you made the comment, and North Country now, you took a full-page article, which you paid for, taxpayers didn't have to pay for that. But the gist of that article was you cut five fire department positions, and you'd have money to repair the Lafayette Street Bridge, shade roller cleanup, rehab cheese plant, replace the seawall along the... replace the seat wall along the Maple City Chair, and repairs the city hall. And I, I didn't think it was a difficult question. And at the time, I said, they're all ambitious and noteworthy projects. But you, you have to inform, you, you've informed the taxpayer how much you would save by cutting five positions. But at the same time, you didn't tell the taxpayer the cost estimates that you had on the proposed infrastructure repairs and where they originated from. I don't, you know, many times, you know, you're dealing with taxpayer, taxpayers' money. And in your words, many times, Mr. Skelly, and especially at the last council meeting, you said accurate figures are very, very important. So you must have some figures on what it's going to cost us to do them repairs to make that statement that you could save five firefighters' positions and use that money to do all that rehab in one or two-year span. So I, I feel that these figures should be ready, readily available. I, I just don't understand why the taxpayer cannot have them. Can anybody?
Break from etiquette because I, I meant to get these, these out. So if you want, Doug, please, please start with the first one, the, in whatever order you want.
Well, no, I, I asked the question of, you said Lafayette Street Bridge, the cleanup of the shade roller.
Yes, 1.2 million, and that will take, that can be accomplished with savings and two years of their payroll.
On the repair of the Lafayette Street Bridge?
Yep.
Well, boy, I just heard, I just heard your city planner say that it's going to cost a heck of a lot more money than that.
Uh, no, I, I believe the, the estimates may have changed, but they were 1.2 million.
Just then, then can somebody, can somebody send me them? Can somebody share them? I don't think it's a difficult question. I don't think it's a derogatory question.
Great, I'm ready right now. I, I want to share this with you, Doug, that I was in a, a meeting today about the, with the Ready Grant. And I was incorrect. When I put that out, the estimate to do a wall along the Osugachi River instead of riprap was $500,000 extra for the city from, from the grant we were given. So it's 500,000. Today, they came back, the Ready Commission came back with a new estimate. And to, we want to walk back along that Osugachi River, which I sure hope, you know, I would love to see. It is 1.2 million dollars on that. So when I thought of one year to accomplish that, it's now, it is now two years. So I was incorrect on that since the estimate changed. And that just came to us in the last couple of days. And then it was finalized today in a meeting, which is really sad because I don't know if the city is going to be able to afford that or not.
Okay. You know, i- if we're going to do this, then just, you know, make these figures readily available.
Well, you remember, Doug, I, I've gone out to the Bullin Alley and to meet twice with you and actually maybe three times with you and twice to bring information and meet with, answer things for you and Brian. And, and, you know, gave you my numbers out there continually. You can always call me, Doug.
Oh, I think I've tried that. Sometimes, sometimes you'll call me and sometimes you won't, Mike, so.
That's not, I'm sorry, that's not correct, Doug.
Yes, it is correct. Yes, it is.
I, I have a lot going on, you know?
We all, we all have a lot going on.
But if you leave me a message, I would always return your call.
Yeah, all right. Not, not a problem. I sent you an email, but.
And I apologize, I apologize to everyone for going out of turn, but I do believe, Doug, you know, I, I meant to get this to you, so.
Thank you.
The next?
The next individual is registered as Margaret Haggerty, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open.
Okay, thank you and thanks for taking my call again. I just have three very brief things to address. One is about the arbitration. Mr. Reese, I guess, was questioning something about that. But arbitration is where, where that, what this, what happened here was it's binding. So, and according to the American Bar Association, it doesn't say that the person doing the arbitration has to be a lawyer. It's disagreed upon by both sides and a decision is made about this, this dispute. And in this case, the decision is binding. That was the agreement. I also agree with Mike Powers and Penny. Penny, who called in a little bit ago about the vacancy committee. I didn't even know that there was an opening available. I think that I may very well know at least a couple of people who would be interested and would be submitting, would possibly submit names if they knew that that was a possibility. And also, once again, I request if meetings could be held at city hall in the future. I know we've got the pandemic, I know, but I think that we can do the six feet apart and then have better audio and without feedback and better visuals so that we're not seeing people pop in and out and then screens go black and, and not, and, and only see a few people when we know that there are other peoples involved, people involved. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
The next individual is registered as Brian Mitchell, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Your line is open now. Mr. Mitchell? Mayor, did you want me to move on and we'll circle back?
Yes, please.
It appears he's having some audio issues. The next individual is registered as Carol Shaver, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open.
I just have one comment basically for Mr. Reese. If you look up arbitration, this is coming from the American Bar. It says arbitration is a private process where disputing parties agree that one or several individuals can make a decision about the dispute after receiving evidence and hearing argument. When arbitration is binding, the decision is final, can be enforced by a court, and can only be appealed on very narrow grounds. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual is registered as Brian Mitchell, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Mr. Mitchell?
Can you hear me now, Kathy?
Yes, I can hear you now, sir.
Okay, perfect. Mayor, you just made one comment that you were able to meet with Mr. Loffler and I, that you always return messages. I've been trying to send them through Facebook Messenger and been blocked. I always wondered if it's possible to set up a meeting with you, Doug, and whoever else in the public at the Augsburg Hall. If you could set up a time and make it public, that would be great.
Just, you're always welcome to call me on my cell phone. It's on, it's on the city website. Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
The next individual is registered as Deborah Montgomery, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted.
Hi, good evening. I just real quick wanted to say that after everything that's been said this evening, that I was kind of shocked to think that you did what you did with Mark Knowlton. As previous people had said, I'm sure there are many people who would have been open to the idea of serving on that board. But you guys, once again, did your big four to three. I can't believe that you, you guys just don't get it, do you? Seriously, I'm just very disappointed in you guys. I really am. I thought that maybe, maybe I prayed that, you know, some things would change in 2021. And unfortunately, you guys are still doing the same kind of business, the same kind of way. Scamp, Nicole, and Mike, thank you for having our backs on every issue. Have a good night, Eve.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we do not have a need for executive session tonight. So at this time, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that one.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All vote? Adjourned. Good night, everyone.